Good evening and welcome to the Tempe City Council Meeting here in October 26, 2017, here in the Harry E. Mitchell Government Center. For all those that are able, could you please rise and join us in a Pledge of Allegiance? Followed by the invocation, or invocation then a Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation is by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage.
Thank you, Mayor. Heavenly Father, guide us to speak the truth as you give us ears to hear the truth. Help us always to listen to each other with humility and respect and give us strength and courage to do the task before us this day and always. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item on our agenda is the minutes. Councilmember Keating.
I should, I said, I said, I.
Thank you, Mayor. I motion we approve item A1 through 4.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember QB. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion carries. And we have Councilman Navarro on the phone. Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. I motion we approve items B1 through 18.
It's been moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. That motion passes 7 to 0. Next item on our agenda is, I have some announcements. I'm going to come down to the podium for one announcement. Would Shelley Hearn please come down, Community Services Director, as well as Jeremy King and Jill Rasmussen from our Community Services Department? First off, I have to brag a little bit about Jeremy as he walks down here. Jeremy was one of 15 leaders across the country selected to serve as an after-school ambassador by the National After-School Alliance this year. Jeremy has dedicated, is a dedicated champion for quality after-school and summer learning programs. And as an after-school ambassador, Jeremy mobilizes business, community, and faith leaders, lawmakers, as well as educators, parents, and others to increase resources for after-school programs, which keeps students safe, inspire them to learn, and also to help working families. KidZone has been a staple in Tempe schools for more than 26 years, providing morning and afternoon care to children in K through 5th grade. As many Tempe parents know, it's an amazing program that offers our kids homework, help, and free enrichment classes, as well as a little fun after-school on the playground. The city of Tempe is luckily to have such an amazing and award-winning program. And in order to promote the importance of after-school programs such as KidZone, I hereby proclaim October 26, 2017, as Lights On After School Day. I do have a proclamation, and I'll quickly read it. It states, "Whereas the citizens of Tempe stand firmly committed to the quality after-school programs and opportunities because they provide a safe, challenging, and engaging learning experiences that help children develop social, emotional, as well as physical and academic skills, support working families by ensuring their children are safe and productive after the school day ends, to build stronger communities by involving students, parents, business leaders, and adult volunteers in the lives of young people, and thereby promoting positive relationships among youth, families, and adults, engage families and schools and community partners in advancing the welfare of children. And whereas programs such as Tempe's KidZone's enrichment program has provided significant leadership in the area of community involvement, specifically in the education and the well-being of our youth, grounded in the principle that quality after-school programs are key to helping children become successful adults. Now therefore, I, Mark Mitchell, Mayor of Tempe, do hereby declare this October 26, 2017 day as Lights On After School." So thank you. Let's give a round of applause to our staff. Mr. Manager, you have any announcements?
No announcements, Mr. Mayor.
Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda will be considered as a group and will be enacted with one motion by the City Council. Unless an item is removed for separate consideration, members of the public may remove public hearing items only for separate consideration. Public hearing items are designated by an asterisk. Councilmembers may remove any items for separate consideration. If you do wish to speak on an item, please fill out a speaker's card, which can be found in the back of the council chambers, and please hand it to our city clerk, Assistant City Clerk Dusty, and she'll give it to us as we, so we can call on you when your time is recognized. The consent agenda is as follows: miscellaneous items 5A1 through 5A12, awards and bids and contracts, items 5B1 through 5B9, and resolutions, items 5C1 through 5C17. Any agenda item marked with an asterisk is a public hearing item and can be removed by the member of the public. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to get my attention now? Any items that was read on the consent agenda that is a public hearing item, could you please get my attention now? Seeing none, I look to my council colleagues. Mr. Granville.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two tonight, 5A3 and 5B5.
5A3, 5B5. Anyone else? I look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read, with the exception of 5A3 and 5B5. It's been moved by Councilmember Shapiro, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion carries 7 to 0. Thank you, Mr. Navarro. The next item is items 5A3. 5A3 is to approve an amended subdivision platform for Millen and Morse located at 11616 South 71st Street. The application is Brandon Millen. Councilman Granville.
Yeah, I actually don't have any problem at all with what this is. It's the right location. It's a huge lot. I absolutely understand why they divide it. The part that was confusing to me is we went through all of this work to start to put together character areas, and they've mostly been in South Tempe, so we don't see a lot of instances where they're used. But this one is in South Tempe, and it would seem like dividing a property into two parcels so that it could have greater density, or more housing, or more whatever, would be the kind of thing covered in the character area. And so I was surprised not to see what I thought was sort of the purpose of the character areas, which was a line that says, you know, "in alignment with character area," yes, no, recommended by staff, something like that. And so I was curious to know why it wasn't included, and maybe what the, what types of things would include it if this doesn't.
Mayor, Council, what we have not done to this point is just put a line in there, as you say, that says, it's a check, yes, no, maybe so. In this case, the analysis of any character area elements was not really relevant because it's per the zoning. They're allowed to split per certain regulators, and they've met all those regulators. In this case, it also is in good conformance with that character area. With a larger development where they needed rezoning or some special treatment of some type, that would be an instance where we would review to the character area to a greater degree.
Okay, then I guess the only thing I would ask is I think I still have maybe some confusion about when we will and won't see character areas, and if that's in alignment with what council's expectations were when we initiated this process. So if you could just put something together, maybe in a Friday packet, that outlined, we don't do, you know, we, yes to PADs and development agreements, but no to whatever. And that way, at least, we can know when we would expect to see it, not expect to see it, because I know the North Tempe one is about to come online. It's in the review process, so I assume this is going to become a more frequent thing where we're going to start to see it. And also, if we were to see it, where in the agenda, where in the item it might go? My preference would be that it was right in the first page, right with the main bullet points, but I would defer to you all to figure out what you thought was best. And with that, Mayor, I'd move to approve item 5A3.
It's been moved by Councilmember Granville to approve item 5A3, and seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes 7 to 0. Next item is items 5B5, which is to award a job order number 4 to Valley Rain Construction Corporation for the tennis court improvements project at Harrelson Park located at 9325 South Warner Road. Councilman Granville.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, this has been an ongoing discussion and education for me for five years now. I still struggled, the one before this, the swimming pool one, I kind of could understand why it wasn't a low-cost build, because maybe there are issues with plumbing, or issues with something else, or I don't know. A tennis court sure doesn't seem that complicated, and it seems like it would lend itself to a lowest bid contract, but that was not the case here. So maybe if you could continue my education of where the line is, that might help me.
Mayor, Councilmember Granville, Don Besser, Public Works Director. Thank you. That's a great setup to what we're doing here. So this is a job order contract. This is part of a procurement process we use when we, we do it for different reasons. Sometimes we do it because it's super complicated, and the likelihood of developing a set of bid specifications that are so tight and clear that we don't look towards a lot of change orders is problematic for us. Sometimes we do it for timing issues. Sometimes we do it simply because of workload, and we're trying to manage the different contracts. Design bid build causes us to manage multiple contracts. Job order contracting typically is one contract, and that person acts in a capacity of construction managing, as well as helping get us delivered into the field. So it's a balance of that. There's not a hard line about it. It's about balancing the workload to make sure we get the spend appropriate for the CIP that council adopts. In this specific case, the tennis courts, I think you're right, it would be hard for anybody to say they're the most complicated piece of infrastructure we have. What's different about this is there's a full demolition on this, and it requires that you do some amount of estimating for quantities for demolition. And when you do that, depending on if you have to overexcavate, you're just not sure what those quantities look like, so it makes it susceptible to change orders. But other than that, the only other piece of, thing about this piece of infrastructure is it's post-tension cable concrete, which is a new sport court surface that we're going to, so that it'll last 20, 30, 40 years instead of 10, 12, 15 years. And this is one of the vendors, the few vendors that have actually done those, and that's why we're comfortable using them.
I appreciate the explanation. I'd move to approve item 5B5.
It's been moved by Councilmember Granville to approve item 5A5, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes 7 to 0. Next item on our agenda is our non-consent agenda. All the items listed on the non-consent agenda will be considered separately. Agenda items scheduled for introduction and first public hearing will be heard, but will not be voted upon at this meeting. Agenda items scheduled for second public hearing and final adoption will be voted upon tonight. The first section of the non-consent agenda is miscellaneous items, bids, contracts, and resolutions. Item 6A1 has been removed. It's been actually moved to November 9, council meeting, this November. Next item is item 6A2 is approve the utilization of a one-year State of Arizona Cooperative Contract with GuideStop Incorporated DBA Knowledge Services for Temporary Staffing Services. Is there any comments or discussions from the council? If not, I look for a motion on item 6A2.
Move.
Moved by Councilmember Keating, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes 7 to 0. Next item on our agenda is item 6A3 is approve an increase in the contract amount with Axion Enterprises Incorporated for the purchase of digital evidence and body-worn camera solutions for the police department, by the police department. Is there any comments or discussion from the council on item 6A3? If not, I look for a motion on item 6A3.
Move.
Moved by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage, seconded by Councilmember Keating. Please vote.
Aye.
That motion passes 7 to 0. Next item is item 6A4 is to ratify a staff-approved increase and approve a new increase to the contract amount with Worldwide Technology Incorporated for Cisco Networking and Voice Over Internet Protocol and Data Networking Equipment and Consulting Services that are used throughout the city. Is there any comments or discussion from the council? If not, look for a motion on item 6A4. So moved by Councilmember QB, seconded by Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage. Please vote. Councilmember Navarro.
Aye. Aye.
That motion passes 7 to 0. Next item on our agenda is our non-consent agenda is ordinances and items for introduction and first hearing. These items will be read tonight, but no votes will be taken on these items. The second hearing of these items are scheduled for November 9, 2017. The non-consent agenda is ordinance and items for introduction and first hearing. Item 6B1 is to introduce and hold a first public hearing to adopt an ordinance for an amended planned area development overlay and development plan review consisting of new 18-story, 225 feet high for the Weston Tempe located at 11 East 7th Street. The applicant is Sender and Associates. And the second and final public hearing is scheduled for November 9, 2017. This is a public hearing item. I'm going to have Ms. Sender go ahead, since you're up there, go ahead and say a short comment, and then we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Darren Sender, Sender Associates, 464 South Farmer in Tempe. Here representing Kai Investments, which is the developer of the proposed Weston Tempe on 7th Street in Tempe. And we are extremely excited to be here tonight and just quickly show you some imagery. I think most of this is in your packets. I know we've got another hearing on the 9th, but just wanted to say, I'm here also with Kent Berry with Kai Investments. We've been moving forward on kind of everything on this project, so we're hoping to be breaking ground in January. If we could do it sooner, that would be even better. But we're moving forward very quickly. We've got our team assembled, put together. All our contractor teams are getting ready to go. All the groups that need to put the drawings together are getting prepared. You're all familiar with the sites, so I'll kind of pass that over quickly. Let's see, I'll just show you just some of the imagery here to remind you. And if you have any questions, please go ahead and ask us. And then if there's any public comment, we'd just love to have a couple of minutes to rebut that as well. We did, in terms of moving forward quickly, we did add some language with staff's consent and commission consent to allow us to start construction a little quicker than typical. Stipulation number 4 under the PAD allows us to start our demo and our grading and everything as soon as we get our mass excavation permit. And that takes about a month and a half or so to get the permit through the city. We would love to do that at grading if we could. That would get us started on construction even sooner. So just so you know, we're really excited to be here. I know Weston is very, very excited about this location, and we think it's a beautiful project, and hope we have your support tonight and on November 9. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember QB.
Just a quick question. You said you had chosen your contractor teams. Can you tell us the teams?
Contractor hasn't been chosen just yet, but we are leaning towards, you want to say, I don't know.
Okay.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage.
Well, I have the opportunity. I mean, I had sent a couple of questions, but overall, I am just as excited. I'm really, I think this is going to be a really complimentary development that's going to be downtown, and complement a lot of the other hotels that we have too, so I'm really looking forward to it. And I think the one thing, I think Darren, you and I have had this conversation, is about that streetscape, making sure that it is equitable to what we've encouraged moving further east. So as long as those things, and the one piece I didn't quite understand was where the restaurant was and the openness of that, because we talked a little bit about integration and making it kind of a really fun experience, except for the people that were walking by and being able to see and have that synergy and that excitement there. So I wasn't really sure through the pictures. It was kind of hard to capture, but I don't know if maybe you could just cover those real quick.
Absolutely. Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Arredondo Savage, we, boy, we learned a lot about the 7th Street streetscape and the connectivity between Mill Avenue and College Avenue on prior projects that we've worked on. So what we did here, and what staff also had us do, is make sure we created a significantly lush pedestrian shaded walkway that will connect over. So we did actually look at the public plans for the project next door. We matched those plans and enhanced them where we could. Pulled the building back, what, 25 feet or so?
20.
Pulled the building back, put a canopy over the public area in the realm, created a huge, I don't know if you can see, just north where it says 7th Street, that's all landscaping. We took all the parallel parking and changed it to angled parking to match, again, the project next door. Added a parking space. We were able to get an additional parking space in there. Benches, seating, you know, you name it. Really tried to make that lush. And staff, you know, that was one of their first comments. Let's make this as lush as we possibly can. So RSP is our architect, they went to town on this and really took that to heart. So I think it's a great idea. I think that we fulfilled that. With regard to the restaurants on the west side, on the northwest corner, you can kind of see there's a patio café. That's all kind of open. Let me see if I can, here, this is that corner.
Right.
That's the café there. That's, it's a, it's part of and not part of the hotel, kind of all at once. It's all public and synergized with the streetscape, as well as it wraps around the alley a little bit, which we are improving to create pedestrian access on the alleys. The other side is the, if you look at, kind of hard to see here, but the northeast corner of the building where those three trees are, that's the, unfortunately, this plan is showing you the rooftop deck. If you looked at that where those three trees are down at the ground level, that's where our restaurant and bar area is. And that, we are proposing to have that open up to the sidewalk as well. So the front of this building is so permeable and open with the openings for the guests coming in off the drop-off, the opening for the café, and the opening for the restaurant. I think there's probably more openings there than walls right now. So exactly, we wanted that to happen just as much as you did.
Councilmember Keating.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have somebody for the restaurant already? Do you have somebody in mind or an interested party that's going to go in there?
No, Marriott will help us. Marriott's the flag. They'll help us with a restaurant. They may do it themselves, or they may hire somebody outside to come in and operate the restaurant. But the retail portion itself, we're looking at some type of coffee, you know, user coffee shop that will come in there and operate that 1,800 square feet.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very much.
All right, this is a public hearing item. I do have a couple of cards, so I'm just going to go in order with the cards I do have. Ms. Athena Solomon, state representative, come on down. Welcome.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and members of the council. My name is Athena Solomon, and I have the great pleasure to serve as state representative for District 26.
Can you please state your place of residence, just for the record? Sorry.
Oh, yeah, my place of residence is 2035 South Elm Street.
Thank you.
Oh, okay. All right. So representing North Tempe, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you to speak on an issue as a resident of Tempe and an elected official who represents hundreds of thousands of other Tempe residents. I'm here to express concern with the proposed project at 11 East 7th Street, known as the Tempe Weston. I ask you to consider how many times has a developer come to our city, excited about a plan, only to see it postponed, extended, and ultimately disappear? The council has already voted on zoning changes for this site many times. If you look at the history and facts section of the Request for Council Action Report found on page 18, August 2004, design review approved, not built, expired. September 2004, site plan approved, not built, expired. April 2008, city council approves PAD overlay, not built, expired. March 2015, owner receives notice that entitlements were expired. May 2015, city council approves an extension of prior entitlements. June 2016, request for PAD denied by city council. August 2016, extension granted for prior entitlements. We have spent hours and hours of staff time and many tax dollars reviewing all these plans with nothing to show for it. We need to be cautious about finding a developer who is adequately capitalized and is ready to build something on its important site. I'm heartened to hear that the developer is stating that they're ready to break ground, so I want to further emphasize this point, that we need to make sure this developer is capitalized and ready to break ground in January. Our city has been led in circles five times since 2004. I'm concerned that we may be doing the same thing again. Please let this be the last time we go through this process with developers who cannot demonstrate that they have the financing in place to build right away, once they receive the kind of entitlements that you are considering today. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Juan Mendez. Please come forward. State attorney, place of residence for the record. Welcome, Mr. Senator.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell, council members, residents, guests, and workers. My name is Juan Mendez. I live at 2035 South Elm Street in Tempe. Currently serve, I'm in the first year of my first term as our state senator, representing Legislative District 26, which includes North Tempe. Before that, I had the great honor of serving as our state representative for the same district for four years before that. I come here before you today as an elected official, but also as an 11-year resident of Tempe. When I first moved to Tempe, everyone told me that I would always know Tempe as under development, and I thought that was a positive thing. I knew that that meant my city was always going to be growing. And I want what's best for our city. I want development and jobs for our residents. I want this Tempe Weston project to go forward, but I share the concerns of my colleague and many in the community. My question is this: what assurance do you have that the current laws are actually going to be built? Is this developer simply coming in, using our staff's city time to review plans with no plans to actually build? Do they simply plan to flip the property and sell it for a profit? Or does this developer have financing in hand, right? Is this, are we ready to go? I understand that we have plans for January, but we don't have a contractor yet, so I want to know if this is shovel-ready.
We have to prove.
We deserve to know who we're doing business with, what their financing plans are, and whether we're actually getting a building constructed that will bring quality jobs and revenue to our city, and not just raise the value. I hope we're not just raising the value of a parcel for a developer who may then sit on it for months or years, only to sell it for a profit at the end of this process. If the current developer is serious about building a hotel and bringing quality jobs to our community, they should have no problem adhering to two conditions we are proposing. Upon expiration, all planned area development overlay zones will expire and terminate, and zoning shall revert to city center zoning without the need for further city action. The second is the planned area development zoning destination shall expire if ownership of any of its parcels is transferred prior to insurance of a building permit. I urge the city staff to draft such conditions. I urge the city council to amend the current application at its next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Mr. Brendan Walsh. Please come forward. State attorney, place of residence for the record.
Good evening, Mayor Mitchell and city council members. My name is Brendan Walsh. I live at 3423 West Hearn Road in Phoenix, Arizona, not Tempe. So again, my name is Brendan. I'm the executive director of CASE, Central Arizonans for Sustainable Economy. What we do is we try to engage working families in the political process and try to ensure that development works for the benefit of all families. That's what we're called, sustainable economy. So in the past, policy-wise, we've done several work, like several things. We've worked for worker retention requirement at Phoenix, when Sky Harbor changes their concessionaires and custodial and in food service. We've also advocated for the extension of light rail and other public transportation to lower income areas of Phoenix. And most recently, we were advocates for the minimum wage increase in the sick days ordinance, sick days laws for the whole state and the ballot initiative. So again, like the previous two speakers, I'd like to say that we, as CASE, welcome development, especially hotel development, wherever it happens. In Phoenix, we've been really big supporters of hotel developments, and actually, our organization has partnered with several hotels to actually help their workers become citizens. So like Senator Mendez and Representative Solomon, we're excited about this development. We hope it does go forward. But again, in the event, we have seen many developers actually make promises and not come forward. And so as a matter of policy here, and hopefully going forward, we would ask, I would support Senator Mendez's request that the city look at amendment that would ensure that after, that if the place is not built within a year, as the planned zoning, planned area development would, the agreement would say, that the agreement with the zoning would revert without council action, as opposed to council action being needed to take to revert it. And second, as Juan said, that the entitlement not be able to transfer to another owner if the parcel is sold. if the parcel is sold. So again, we think this is good policy for the city. We... Again, I don't have anything for or against the current developer. We're very excited about this project moving forward. We just hope the city will consider this policy recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. I think I have one more. I have one more card. Okay. Help me out here. Can't read the handwriting. Is it Jaclyn McCaffrey?
Yeah.
McCaffrey? Hi. Please state your name and place of residence for the record.
Thank you. My name is Jaclyn McCafferty. Jaclyn McCafferty. My residence is 3158 East Harmony Avenue in Mesa, Arizona. I do work and manage a business here in Tempe. I'm actually here on another matter, but when this came up, I felt like it was appropriate to ask a question. And this is not of the developer, but rather of the city. As you contemplate these types of developments, what kinds of studies are done to handle the traffic flow or the increase in traffic that will happen when these... if it is put in, when this Weston is put in? How is it going to affect the streets and businesses and residences that are around there? And are there any plans to either increase the capacity of the road structure or increase the efficiency? Or what is going to be done to accommodate that?
Thank you.
And maybe you handle that in a different forum. I'm sorry if you do that.
Okay. It's part of the development process.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Those are all the cards I have. Is anyone else in the audience wishing to address this item, on this item? Could you please get my attention? Seeing none. Again, this is only the first public hearing. We do have another hearing on November 9th, I believe. Darren, you want to come back up and ask... follow up with some of those questions?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We absolutely are in a hurry to develop. In fact, that stipulation number four, we got that pushed forward last time at the DRC, so we could actually start construction right away. We have absolutely no intention of selling this property. So I understand the concerns about what happens when projects don't develop. And that's the process in Tempe. There's a two-year time period for a reason. The city council comes back and looks at development projects. And, you know, most development projects are looked at and reviewed under the policy of, is it appropriate for the area? And if it's appropriate, it's approved. If it's not appropriate, it's typically not approved. So, you know, we completely understand that. A lot of the projects on this property were done during the recession, a couple of them before, several of them after. You all probably know the history of almost all of those projects. In terms of the stipulations, I'll absolutely talk to my client about those. I know... I know the first one is supposed to be two years typically in the ordinance. One year, hold our feet to the fire. That's fine. We're fine with that, as long as, you know, it follows the requirements and the laws and everything. You know, I think we're fine with that. The second stipulation that was offered talks about the property transferring or the P A D not transferring. I don't know if that's enforceable or legal at this point, but for our lenders that we have in place right now, which we do have, our lenders wouldn't like that type of uncertainty. That would be really hard for us to do. But tying that back to the first stipulation, if we can get something that we can actually get started faster and move forward quicker, we're all for it. We are all for that. So...
Councilwoman Shapiro?
So Darren, just a couple of questions. I mean, one, it sounds like a great project, and it sounds like you're ready to go. And I appreciate that. You're basically saying you're okay with an automatic reversion of the entitlements that you're willing to stipulate down in the agreement?
Well, council member, in Arizona, the law is it cannot automatically revert. It has to go through a zoning process.
We're hearing process.
So the council would have to, after one year, do what you do now. You would look at it and say, hey, as a council, do we vote to revert this? And under the ordinance, the P A D requirements, you would say then, you know, yes, we do, or no, we don't. And then it has to go through the whole process. That's just the law of Arizona. That's not just the ordinance requirements. But we're okay with reducing the two years to one year to hold our feet to the fire, as long as staff obviously works with us to get our permits going and get everything moving.
So Mayor, just a couple of questions for Judy. So is there any way to include language in the contract that does anything differently? Or are we bound by state law to... that it has to come back to council in order to have a reversion?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So state law does govern, I believe it's 9462, and it does require a hearing. And I would be happy to discuss this further in more detail if you all would prefer to vote and adjourn to executive session.
And Mayor and Judy, to the latter point about transferability, can we by law include a provision in the development agreement that says... or I'm sorry, not the development agreement, the entitlements that says that it cannot be transferred to the next donor?
You know, zoning entitlements run with the land typically, so I would have to do some research to see if that was even a possibility.
And if it is, Darren, a possibility, then you would agree to it?
The second stipulation about running with the land, it would be extraordinarily difficult for our lenders to agree to that.
You mentioned that, and I'm not sure I understand that completely. So your lenders are determining whether or not to lend you money to build a building, right? So why would they care whether or not the stipulation runs with the land? I mean, that only happens if you don't build the building, right?
Well, if something extraordinarily catastrophic happens, they would... that would be the only time we would sell this land before construction.
But the lender is about building the building.
Lenders are about... excuse me, sorry. Lenders are about certainty. Lenders are about making sure that their money is being placed somewhere that's appropriate. Anything that creates uncertainty... We've seen this in all of our larger projects in Tempe that we've done over the years. Anything that creates uncertainty makes lenders extraordinarily nervous. This would create a lot of uncertainty for our lenders.
I'm just trying to understand. Just so if somebody passed away, or if I was killed tomorrow, and we had the provision to go forward, lender lent the money, we'd be at a passing point that the lender would probably retract the loan. But it would be catastrophic. It wouldn't be something that we're deciding here tonight. It would be, you know, somebody, a principal in the company would... there'd be a catastrophic fatality or something else in the company.
But if that happens, then the loan... If you were the one who was going for the loan, and you pass away and you're not building...
No, no, I understand. But it's in the loan agreement. If that happens, they would have the right to retract the loan. I mean, it would be catastrophic. It wouldn't be, you know, we're not going to flip the property or anything like that. So remember, hospitality is a... it's a very complicated process. And we've passed and vetted through everything that we, you know, permitted through this process. And it would be something like that. So if somebody... The lender would say, if this went into place and the land wasn't able to pass to, you know, with a hotel, somebody else could step in, in our own company, and say, hey, we're moving forward with it. But if a principal passed away, then we'd have an issue.
I guess my... If I understand what folks are asking for, they're just not wanting the entitlements to pass with a piece of dirt. I think if the project were built or were in the process of being built and something catastrophic happened, and I don't want to speak for anyone else, but I'm seeing heads nod, I'm not sure anyone would have a concern about the entitlement then passing. So the only concern about the entitlement transferring to an ex-donor is about if it's just going to... if it's a piece of dirt and it's just going to stay a piece of dirt, in which case, what's the relevance of the lender? Because the lender's obviously not loaning your money, loaning you money if you're not building anything.
Not to get too much into it, but we have a debt piece and an equity piece. So we have two pieces of finance that go in. So the first part that's going to come into this is an equity piece of financing, which are private investors that are coming in. So that's probably what... You may not understand how the financing is going to work. The debt piece will only come in once we go vertical with the property, which is normal in this type of finance model.
And at that stage, the entitlements... This concern about the entitlements aren't relevant any longer once you're going vertical. I feel like we're overcomplicating the simple.
No, I know. I understand.
The only concern is that these folks don't want the entitlements to transfer with a piece of dirt. So are you okay with that?
There's... Well, there's two issues with that. One is, I'm not sure that that can happen that way.
Yeah, I'm saying if it is legal for...
If it is. But the second way... The second reason I'm a little hesitant about it is because it's about... It's about the lenders looking at it today and seeing that level of uncertainty, saying, whoa, wait a minute. If something happens, we can't find someone to step in and take over this project on the land.
If this was a condition, it would just raise doubts with...
With the lenders.
With the lender.
Yeah. That's... But you're absolutely right. Construction would start, depending on how something was drafted, or... And we'll work with staff on these two and Judy as well. It depends on how this condition is drafted. If you actually want us to get going quicker on construction, we can do that.
This is a planned area development. This is not an agreement. And there is some state... Okay. There's some state law that precedes us as we move forward. I mean, I don't know anyone who's going to buy a property where entitlement goes away after one year. I mean, that's why we have the zoning and the P A D process. And my understanding is you're going to... I mean, your intention, you have financing place. If we can get it done quicker, you would. I mean, you...
We have a franchise agreement.
Yeah.
We have a franchise agreement. We have our financing.
I think everybody wants you to be successful. So, Councilmember QB?
I guess the one thing that I'm sort of confused about it, it plays into what Councilmember Shapiro is saying. The lender is lending to you, not lending to the possible future owner, that someone, if you flipped it, for example. They're lending to you. So why would it...
No, they're not. They're lending to the property. The property is actually going to be encumbered by a loan. So the property itself has a value. The value is to go vertical with this property. And so the entitlements to the property obviously mean a tremendous value.
So forgive my ignorance, but when the entitlement is... Let's say you did flip it, the entitlement transferred, does the loan also transfer? The agreement to loan to that new builder transfer? It doesn't...
Only if somebody in our company, you know, again, it would have to be catastrophic, somebody passed away or anything else. Other than that, the loan is going to go forward. But I think the entitlements now on the property, right, are, you know, substantial. We're not asking for anything that's not really already in place. We're just saying we'd like those to proceed with the property if something happens. We are not a development company that flips property. We are hospitality developers. We have a resume. You've seen it in place. And we do have a franchise agreement, I think you've seen. We have financing in place. And obviously, we have no intention. This is not a... Yeah, we really can't flip this project.
Can I ask one more question, and similar?
Yes.
So perhaps you've had this experience in other areas of the country, other cities, but have there been cases where you've had to give assurance to another council about a development project? Is there any way you can give us assurance so we feel comfortable voting for this project, knowing it will be an actual project that will be built in a year?
I'm sure we can send our resume and everything, and you feel comfortable with our company. But no...
No, I don't mean that. I don't mean professional reputation. I just mean assurance that you indeed are going to build. I mean, you say you're going to build, but is there... I think what we're hearing is we want some sort of assurance that the building will happen with the plans that you have.
Well, Councilwoman, I'm flying home tonight. If my plane crashes, I don't know what's going to happen to me.
All right.
And I'd just like to say one last thing, Mr. Mayor, members of council. If any of these people that spoke tonight want to talk to us or contact us, please, they can contact me. I can get them in contact with Kent or Chris.
Sure.
We hadn't heard from them, so I would love to just help them understand what we're doing and their concerns that might have. So I'd like to just pass that along.
Anything. My phone's on. Anything. We'd love to talk to anybody about this process.
Thank you. Councilmember Keating?
Can we just make sure that Representative Solomon and Senator Mendez are invited to the groundbreaking in January?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Yes.
Absolutely. And if we can get it before January...
Can we get it in December?
We'll work with staff to make that happen in December.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Again, this was only the first hearing. We're not voting or taking any action on this tonight. The next time we're here, this item is on November 9th. Next item is Item 6A4, is the ratified staff approved increase and approved increase of the contract amount with Worldwide Technology Incorporated?
I'm sorry, Mayor. I think we're on 6B2.
I'm sorry. Wrong one. Excuse me. 6B2. Introduce and hold the first public hearing to adopt an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a lease agreement with KBS 2 Fountainhead. The second and final public hearing is scheduled for November 9th, 2017. This is a public hearing item. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to address us under Item 6B2? Can you please get my attention? Seeing none. I'll close that portion. Any other comments or discussion on Item 6B2 from the council? No? Next item is our non-consent agenda, is ordinance as items for a second hearing and final adoption. There are no items under this section tonight, so we won't have any there. Next, we go to current council events and announcements. Councilwoman Shapiro?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say I appreciate you addressing in your earlier comments about the Lights On Event and the after-school programs in our city. And I was honored to have an opportunity to join you yesterday at Agar.
Thank you for going.
It was a lot of fun hanging out with the kids. And it's really incredible what Tempe does. And I am actually having the opportunity right now to learn about what other cities in the state do as I travel all around the state. And not too many folks are doing what we do in Tempe with our Kids Own program. The high-quality after-school program, serving kids from preschool all the way through elementary school, was not something you find in a lot of communities. So I'm really proud of Jill and all the folks at Kids Own. And it was a great honor to participate in that event with you yesterday.
All right. Thank you for going. Councilmember Granville?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to give two kudos to the city, city staff. One is for this last weekend, the Half Ironman was this weekend.
Did you do it?
I didn't. I volunteered at it. And I'm actually volunteering at the upcoming Ironman. And also, there was the Tour de Fad and Oktoberfest. There's just been a huge array of special events that have gone on. And I know something that Councilmember QB has been interested in, as well as myself and all of council, is having recycling at these events. And that was a policy change, as of a year or so ago. And it was just really nice to see that at each of these events now, there are, in fact, recycling containers at all these events. As a matter of fact, I'd just gotten an email, as well as Councilmember QB, that Ironman, the Half Ironman that was just this weekend, had a 30% diversion rate at their event. Now, maybe that could be better, but that's certainly better than it was five years ago.
Yeah.
Right. And so it's progress. Progress is progress. Right. And so that's exciting to see. And the other one I would just mention is, everyone has seen the grid bikes, the green bikes that are out. And we've been getting reports on that. Even though Phoenix and Mesa had a two-year head start on us, we now already, after only two months in the program, have more subscriptions, more riders, more miles, more revenue than Phoenix or Mesa. And it only took us two months to get there. So while the negotiations might have taken a while, clearly, there was an interest and a need for this in Tempe.
Are you dissing Mesa?
Huh?
Are you dissing Mesa?
No. No, it's a fine city.
Vice Mayor Adondo Savage?
Thank you, Mayor. And I think I would say, actually, if you look at the ridership too, most of them are ASU students too.
They are.
So thank you to the ASU students that are actually out there utilizing it, because that's a really positive thing. So just a couple of things. I don't know if you got a slide right. This weekend, we have the FASPA workshop. So if you are a high school senior and you're thinking about maybe going on to college or a community college, you know you need to fill out your FASPA form. So this weekend, it's a free workshop. We're going to have a lot of different individuals there from our partners. And not only do we have education partners, but we actually have career partners too. So we're going to be there. We'll have some people that will be able to help those families that would prefer to speak in Spanish. So we're really excited about that opportunity. Make sure that you register. Do what you need to do, so you can come on down and complete your FASPA form. And again, just thank you to the city staff and everybody that works really hard to put together our College Connect partners. You know, we've really come a long way. And I want to give a shout out to Mary Maisy. I saw her earlier, and I know she's not now. But she's been doing a lot of really great work and, you know, really thankful for that, too. Of course, I just have to give a shout out to... I can't even believe it, but my son is turning 20. I don't even know. Right. I knew that was coming. I'm old. What can I say? So anyway, Joey, happy birthday. Go Sun Devils for this weekend. That's it, Mayor.
Councilmember QB?
As a representative of the Animal Protection Working Group, just want to let everyone know that animal shelters are over capacity. The county shelter reports, I think, having over 100 dogs and cats over capacity. So they are going to have free adoption fees this weekend, now and through the weekend. So please consider adopting a pet.
Councilmember Keating?
Nothing for me, Mayor. Thank you.
I only have one other additional comment or announcement. This Saturday, as in a day from now, is Homecoming Week at Arizona State University. We have the Homecoming Day Parade. University come down. It's a good time to celebrate ASU and all the alumni and homecoming events against USC. But that, again, as council has indicated earlier, I really want to thank staff for everything you've done. We have had a lot... This is a busy time of year for the state of Tempe with events. I know we have the Mill Avenue, you know, the Arts Festival coming up in December. We have the Ironman coming up in a week or two. There's so many great projects. We've got Veterans Day with the Veterans Day Parade coming up on November 11th. So there's so many great things happening. And we can't do it by ourselves. We can't do it without the... do it without the dedicated staff that we have. And again, on behalf of the council, we all appreciate everything that we all do, our city does. And with that, don't forget, also, November 4th is our city employee picnic over at Kiwanis Park. So make sure the employees, you guys sign up with your families, it's a great time to see everybody out. There's going to be no dunk take unfortunately this year, I think. I think, I think Councilmember Granville was upset. How many times he got dunked?
Oh, many.
Just kidding. I'm totally kidding. I was a lot, I got dunked a lot.
Shapiro put bags of ice in the water.
I did, they put bags of ice in the water. All right. All right, with that, we will close the current events and council announcements. Next item is our public appearances. According to Arizona Open Meeting Law, the city council may only discuss matters listed on this agenda. Matters discussed by the public during public appearances cannot be discussed by the city council unless they are specifically listed on this agenda. There is a three-minute time limit per speaker. Speaker's visual aids, recorded tapes are not allowed. Members of the public shall refrain from making any personal or impertinent or slanderous remarks or becoming boisterous while addressing the city council during this meeting. Unauthorized remarks will result in the removal of the council chambers. So any clamping, stomping on feet, yelling, or any other similar demonstrations are prohibited, and violations of these rules will also result in removal from the chambers. With that, under scheduled public appearances, I have Jackie McCaffrey, who spoke earlier, please come down. And you're going to be speaking. Concerns on Rio Salado Parkway between Mill and Rural?
Yes. Mayor Mark Mitchell, Vice Mayor Robin Arredondo Savage, councilmembers Colby Granville, Randy Keating, Lauren Kubey, Joel Navarro, David Shapiro, and all the good people in Tempe. I am Jackie McCafferty, and I am the chief operating officer for Davis Miles McGuire Gardner, a law firm, a regional law firm that's based here in Tempe. We've been located at the Hayden Ferry location since about 2010. We have 70 attorneys and approximately 135 employees. We have several attorneys who participate on the Tempe Chamber of Commerce. I recently participated with Vice Mayor Robin Arredondo Savage with a business panel on opportunities for youth and employment. This morning, our law firm sponsored a charity event to raise money for cancer research. Saturday, we are going to be running to raise money for helping battered women and children. Now, I tell you this just to let you know that we are committed to making this community a better place. It's been good for me to be here tonight. Thank you for all the work that you do to make Tempe such a good place to work, live, and do business. One of Mayor Mitchell's quotes is, "Tempe is open for business. Although you've done a lot, I want to ask you to do a little bit more." What you do speaks so loudly that sometimes we can't hear what you say. The development along Rio Salado has brought in businesses along with tax revenue to the city of Tempe. Because of indecision or no decision as how to handle the increased traffic flow along Rio, traffic's in a critical situation. Our workers are taking half an hour to go one mile from the parking garage to rural. If there were a serious emergency at any of those properties along Hayden Ferry, first responders could not get in and out to handle that emergency. It really is critical. We elect you to help make this a better place and to think about how the decisions you make in development impact that quality of life. We're asking that you take some action to remedy the issues that have resulted from that lack of forethought and lack of preparedness. The response that I've gotten via email that it takes decades for the city to act is not good enough. The response that I got that there will be a streetcar put in in 2020, that's three years away. Can't we do anything before then? So there's three things that you can do to make traffic flow more, better, to address that congestion. One is add capacity. Two is use the existing capacity more efficiently. And three, encourage use of existing capacity in less congesting ways. So these are just my ideas, and I'm not a traffic engineer, but in the using existing capacity more efficiently, give more green time on rural so that Rio Salado traffic can flow through. Your traffic engineer told me that that would be an easy fix. If that's the case, do it. The last traffic study that was done, that's being used, was a year ago. All that State Farm development has gone in, the other apartments that are along that, the hotel. I bet you that that's probably double as what it was a year ago, the use on that road. Build a pedestrian bridge over Mill so that people turning right or northbound on Mill from Rio cannot have to stop for that pedestrian traffic.
Jackie, I'm going to have to, your time is up, but you can email us, or I can sit down and talk to you, either way. I just want to let you know, I thank you for coming forward and speaking. We've heard you. Unfortunately, we, unfortunately, the last couple of days, we had some technical issues with our traffic lights, so that's even increased the delay. I'm not just talking about the last three days, I'm talking, I'm just letting you know because we're, we're getting a flood of emails. And we understand what we're, what we have to do. We're working with our traffic engineers to, to work on some, mitigate some of the concerns that you brought up. It doesn't negate the fact that it's today, we have congestion, and we're trying to work on that. So we take that in all sincerity, and we're going to do our very best in due diligence to resolve the issues that you brought up. If you, we'd be more than happy to email us, what you just, so you can finish it. Unfortunately, your time is up, so.
Okay, well, the best time to have acted on this problem would have been before the development was done, but the next best time is today. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we don't have any other scheduled public appearances, so I will... I do have unscheduled public appearances. I have Mr. Scott, is it Severs? Please come forward, state your name and place of residence for the record.
Gary Severs, 926 East McNair, Tempe, Arizona. Mayor Mitchell, I'm on the radio. You've got to be my helper. Two minutes, one minute, 30 seconds. Slash the road means stop.
We have.
I know, I know, but I'm used to, you have to be on a director. Now, I, Senator Mendez turned around and thanked you guys, because he's got a face made for television. I got a face made for radio, so I'm going to look this way. You're seeing the best part of me. I'm the German, I have thick German legs, I have a massive posterior, and so I'm going to tell you one, I promise I won't look. One bad German joke will you've grown. What do you get when you wake up a German too early in the morning? A sauerkraut. Anyway, back to... Tempe Center for the Arts, your anchor groups, David Sauberchild's play, Dr. Strange for the Tempe Symphony Orchestra. Now, Dr. Strange did the alumni band, he was an ASU professor, and on the football games, as you mentioned, the big game, they would flash on the screen, even the smaller screen that they used to have, when the, the Christmas concert would be. Now, when Dr. Strange was there, it was always in Gammage Auditorium the Monday after the Thanksgiving weekend. Now, normally, these things are done a year in advance. Do you know when the schedule for the Christmas concert for the Tempe Symphony Orchestra is? I went to the one on, on last Monday, October 23rd. It was wonderful, got several standing ovations, and Dr. Strange was thought to be irreplaceable, but Doug Akey is wonderful, he's as good as Dr. Strange goes at the same age.
He was my band teacher.
Doug?
No, Akey.
Doug, Doug, isn't he great?